Anybody want to talk? Anybody want to talk? Does anybody have any? Uh, suggestions or modifications? I did. Sorry. The number eight. Peter just had one. Is Jinx consider? Do you need to add an S? Just because those were the. Actually, we like changing them. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this? Second, sorry. All in favor?
She already gave you the warrants. I was.
Okay, next item of business is. Warrants. We do not have a payroll warrant yet.
Not yet.
And.
Tomorrow.
Um, I will. Come in and sign it whenever it's.
Yeah, I'll text you when it's ready.
Okay, items over a thousand. C A I. What we're going on here. Amazon Capital Services, two thousand one hundred and eighty-one and eighty-five cents.
Yeah, a lot of that is office supplies. Um, and one is utilities. We needed to get a lot of tech. Um, in preparation for the new phone setup. And finally set up invoicing with Amazon, so we don't have to put it on the credit card. That's why Amazon's on the warrant now.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's just where they always wanted to be. Bennington County Sheriff's Department, five thousand one twenty-two and fifty cents. And also five hundred and thirty.
Uh, the five thousand is for the patrols for the month of August, and then they just sent another one because they forgot to add it to the. Five thousand, so an extra one came through.
C A I Technologies for one thousand four hundred and twenty.
That's the first payment of the map line recompilation that Gina spoke to us about last time.
Ah, great.
Yep, these. Little payments at a time.
I think we get a motion. I'm excited. Thank you. Okay. Solar Waste Systems, nine thousand eight hundred and forty-six.
The bulk of that is the monthly uh, transfer station pickup fee.
It's such a high fee, we really.
It sure is. We're gonna talk about that during the next meeting.
Okay, and just in the. Uh, the category of unusual. Sixty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents to chemclaim.
Cleaning chemicals from the DPW, equipment maintenance.
The Dufrane Group, two thousand seven hundred and fifty and. Three thousand five hundred and thirty-one.
The thirty-five hundred is uh, for this sewer feasibility study. And the twenty-seven fifty is uh, for the. Engineering for the uh, phase one water pipe. Project. That's, those are the two projects that Dufrane Group are. Doing the engineering on.
And is the sewer feasibility? Study part covered by grant money?
I talked. Sort of yes, but they call it a forgivable loan. They don't call it a grant. There's, and I forget the distinction between them, but it's not our. It's, it will be of no cost to the town at the end of the day.
Okay, so this is a sort of wash through.
Yes. Yeah.
Um, Innovative Surface Solutions, two. Payments of five thousand five hundred and forty-two thirty-seven each.
Yeah, two different invoices. Um, calcium chloride. For the DPWs for the roads.
Madison Repair Services. One thousand five hundred and sixty-two fifty.
Sixty-two fifty. Oh, there it is, repair services. They had to replace an air dryer assembly. We we supplied the parts, Mike said, and it's for the truck number six.
And that Morris Excavating, one thousand and fifty.
That was hammer work on the White Creek Road paving job.
M S K Engineering, two thousand three hundred and forty-eight.
That is stormwater permit testing, so it's an engineering fee for the garage stormwater.
Okay, and here we come to the really big box Springfield Paving. Two hundred and twenty-one thousand, six dollars and six cents.
That is for the paving of White Creek Road, which is covered by a grant.
In its entirety.
In its entirety, in its entirety, yes.
Great.
Yay.
Weaver Excavating, one thousand and fifteen.
Uh, they had to rent a roller uh, for the, that project, the White Creek Paving project.
We saw this on the last one too. Bull Sale Distributors, seven thousand four hundred and eighty.
That is the cost of three culverts that also went on the White Creek, White Creek Road. That's getting on the set. Culverts are expensive.
Okay. So go. Going backwards before I ask people if they have. Questions. Um, this is. Check warrant number two thousand. No, twenty-five thousand and eight. Um, for a total of two hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. And I think we already got a motion. Any questions on any of that? In this part of the world? All in favor? Thank you. Would I forget something? Yes, we have to sign it. Yeah, I really, I apologize. I am not well tonight and my brain is not. Okay, announcements.
I have an announcement. Yesterday, we started the uh, Fourth Sunday for Veterans and we started in Village Cemetery. And we had some volunteers and we cleaned seventeen headstones and I just want to thank everybody for showing up. And we're gonna do it once a month on the Fourth Sunday, except next month is gonna be Third Sunday because I'm gonna be out of town. But, and as long as there's no snow on the ground or unless it's pouring out, we're gonna do it and we're gonna clean every veteran. In our cemeteries. So it's gonna take a while, but we hope to do it before the two hundred and fiftieth celebration of Vermont. Because the Historical Society would like us to do a digital tour. And set it up and we'd like all our veterans, especially the Revolutionary War soldiers' graves to look wonderful. Wow, so.
Are you welcoming more volunteers?
Yes. Because we only had four. So that would be great if we could get some more, but it was nice, so.
Okay, so you should keep announcing.
Yes, absolutely.
And is it on the website?
Yes.
People can.
Yes, and Facebook and, yeah.
Excellent, great. Thank you for doing.
Announcements.
I don't know, are we gonna talk about the V Trans? Public meeting?
Want to announce that again?
Yeah, I'm going to, so um, there's gonna be the V Trans public meeting about um. The roadwork that's gonna happen just north of us at six P M at Shaftesbury Elementary School. I think everybody received a postcard in the mail.
Yes.
September thirtieth, it's a Monday, um, so please come having. Support. And conversation is really important for. Them understanding kind of the implications of their choices. As to how much traffic will come through our town.
Yeah, very important that they hear from a lot of people. Um, and speaking of V Trans, I wanted to announce that um. I got a notice from the Solar Project Company. Today that um, V Trans has approved the temporary.
Limited access.
Limited access.
Road.
Exit. It's an exit, yeah. Um, Route seven, so I, I think that was the only outstanding. Item, really.
So it's a go ahead for them to do the whole project.
That's how I understand.
Oh, okay.
I could be wrong, but that's how I understand. Um, Paula has a exciting and nice one.
Well, this is as exciting as it gets. So silly that this is that exciting. We, you know, in our effort to figure out how to waterproof. Possibly the downstairs of Coal Hall and get rid of the mold, going through files and files and files. We found the septic system. It does have one.
It's in your files, right?
So many files. It, it, it's where it makes sense it would be, right off of. This corner where the restroom is, it's there, but we have. Ancient proof here from nine, twenty thirteen, when it was last pumped, so we probably should do that again. But moreover, the more exciting thing is that we have a dry well. And we didn't know. And we also know where the oil tank is and it's underground, but we, this is part of the mystery of. What is in the ground and where the things are at Coal Hall and now we know. So knowledge is power as we move forward. And figure out how to. Make her seaworthy.
Yeah.
Not seaworthy.
You know what I mean, metaphorically.
Help the moles.
Yes. Just the fact that we have a dry well is. Amazing.
Yeah, it's particularly exciting because maybe it means we could um.
Have the water.
Some pump. Out of basement.
Get the water out.
To the dry well rather than just back onto the ground.
Is that oil tank in use that's?
I assume so.
Since we're heated with oil, probably.
Yes, you'll see the. Pipes coming out of the. The building, so.
It's right under where you parked.
Yeah, don't light a match.
You don't usually see that up here. In New Jersey, that was the way it was done. Spent the last. Thirty years digging back up.
Yeah, so that, that's another question that that remains to be seen whether we'll have to.
And as we write grants, the more information to try to kind of stabilize the downstairs. To make it at least ha- habitable for.
Maybe an oil tank.
That and maybe our records or something that. All this information, I think, is gonna be very, very helpful.
The picture is becoming clearer.
Yes.
Which is good.
Like the grants.
And we're gonna um, return to it again.
Yes.
Item on the agenda. Okay, any other announcements?
Hello, buddy. I never tied a bow on August, so could we pull up the August um, cash flow, please? Okay. Let's see what happened. It seems like a long time ago now. Um, you can see the, the biggest number there and the money coming in and some.
I didn't share, hang on, sorry.
Highway state aid, I talked about that before.
I need a second.
Just, sorry. Anyway, uh, we got an entire year of highway aid all at one time because of the. Um, towns that were affected by flooding, um, so we were the beneficiary of that as well. Um, it just means, it's just fed up. It's, it's not extra money, it's just faster money. There's a. Transfer station, that's uh, the money in that you were, you were talking about how, how much money goes out. That, that was, that's more than a month's worth. I think I had been. Um, sitting on it a little bit. Um, not much else going on on money in, gonna look down at dispersments. Okay, yeah, that, you, you see the, the turned Beamer's check, uh, voided Beamer's check, that. That was just more of the sort of growing pains of bringing P R um, in-house. It, I think that everything's working really well now. We've got, we're not using live checks anymore. We managed to persuade the I R S to take our money uh. By A C H now, so I don't have to go to the bank to do wire transfers. That, that just worked the other day and that, that had been. Quite an ordeal, but um. Uh, if you, if you see Tiffany give her a pat on the back, this has been a, a real undertaking. You know, you never know how, how. How difficult something like that's gonna be, but it seems like it's working really well now. So you can see we've got a fairly large cash, cash balance for this time of year, considering that you do not see. Tax receipts yet because the tax bills went out at the very end of August. You'll see that when we look at September. So if you go down to the very bottom, you can see it's, it's hardly even worth looking at um. Budget versus actuals this early in the year, but you compare it to last year, it's, it's pretty similar. Um, the, the difference, really, the reason, as I just said, the revenue is looking a little higher than last year. That's because of all that highway money. Um, even though last year we had started getting tax payments at this time, so. It's really kind of apples to oranges. Um, it'll be clear when we start looking at the tax receipts, which we will in September. Want to take a real quick look at, oh, any questions about any of that? That's.
I did.
Yeah.
Why did Veemer send the check back?
Um, there, there was a, a, a lot of confusion about. Bills, the checks going to the wrong Veemer's office and they, they don't. Talk to each other and it, it was just misunderstandings, but um, it's all straightened out now. So it was, it was double payments um. And them re- returning checks that they, that they didn't like the post office box on it or something like that. Tiffany could give you all the details on it, but it was, it was just um. Paperwork misunderstandings. Is, is that a fair way of saying?
Yeah, I think so. It was mailed to the wrong place. They sent it, instead of talking to each other, the two offices that had to come back and. We straightened it out.
Yeah.
It's not straightened out.
It isn't? Oh my God.
I logged in.
Oh, well, there, for them, it's straightened out. Maybe it hasn't trickled down.
Okay, may, maybe that's an offline.
You want September?
Any, anything else? Let's look at August reserve.
You want September, right?
I want August for the reserve accounts.
Right there?
This is the, a general fund, if you've got the reserve, I'm pretty sure.
Hang on, I got that. You did send it, but I got like five sheets. I got this big in my way.
Uh, why don't we can look at this first? Why don't we look at this one first since we've got it there? The uh, September for the cash flow. That's fine. Um, so there you see. The big number that jumps out is tax receipts. Hooray, we've got a half million in already. Um, when you. See me looking a little um. Frazzled, that's, that's what I'm dealing with. That's, that's represents, you know, each of those are the. Two to five thousand dollar checks, so they, they, it adds up. Um. And there's a, some delayed with taxes. I also got some more from um, Polly. Today.
That's good.
Yeah.
If you want to. Amazing, that's good.
Yeah, it just keeps chipping away. And that's that famous election grant, uh, the five thousand dollars that I finally deposited because I finally figured out how to deal with it. That's free money, I think, for um, to use towards elections, right?
Yeah, Marlene has some plans for it when she goes to the election. Yeah.
The, there's the I R S transfer you see there for six thousand dollars. That, that is that triumphant um, A C H that I was so happy about. Um, I don't, in the middle of the month, I don't show you how we are doing versus um. First budget, I wait until we have completed month um, numbers for that. So that's all I've got to say about cash flow. Any? Question about any of that? Oh, I, I do want to say to anybody in um. In. Who's out there who watches this, please check your check, your tax bill. Make sure that if you're expecting homestead, uh, that you have it. If you do not, you still have until uh, October fifteenth to get your homestead declaration in. It's. Uh, for, for some people, it is critically important to. To do that. It can make a huge difference to your tax bill. So don't wait until November to open your bill. Open it, look at it, make sure that you have, you're paying the rate that you should be paying.
Boy. I know you did. Alright, we're done with these cash flows, right? No, don't need that. Don't need that. Here we go.
Um, there's so little going on, and you can see. Oh, let's see, is that, yeah, that's September, but we don't even need to look at August because there's so little going on. There's uh, just a little bit of water payments you see at the two sixty line. And, excuse me, the restoration fund is, uh, that's whenever I. Process um, Marlene's payments from downstairs, I, I. Transfer over to the restoration funds, the portion that um, is required, I believe, by statute to go into um, restoration and. Preservation, and so I do that every time. Um, now, rather than doing just at the end of the year, it's, it's better to, to keep track as we go along. So you've seen those before.
Why do we still have an ARPA funding one?
Because we still have sixty-three.
But the amount that's in that. At this moment is.
Because the warrant, I think, just went out. Was it on the last warrant the house coming down? It just hasn't caught up with.
But I thought that with all of the. Chips and changes with that.
Right, but depending on when she did this, well, that was today.
Creates a do to do from, and I have not um, done the transfer to make. Uh, the general fund hold, if you've been writing checks on ARPA, is that what your, is that your question?
Yeah.
I guess, I just had thought that once we had made that change, that there was no longer.
We left a hundred thousand in.
There's still that designation. We left a hundred thousand in for several.
Yeah, okay, right, right. Yeah.
What we talk about.
Right, and it's over a hundred thousand now because it is still earning interest.
Interest, that's okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
But then if you've been writing checks on that, I have, it will create.
They will come off.
Next, yeah, okay, and I haven't done that lately, but I'll probably.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Any questions about any of the rest of the reserve? Funds?
Could you just tell us a little bit about the Restoration Fund?
Sure, um. There, there is a per page um, of, of a fee, well, not a fee. Marlene charges a certain amount for um. You know, copies of the certified copies and what, whatever. She, she can talk more about, about exactly what goes into it, but whenever she gives me her, uh, the, when she cashes out downstairs. Um, she tells me how many pages she has dealt with and there is a per page uh, amount that goes into the Restoration Fund now, so that we, so it's a reserve account. For doing uh, uh, restoration work in, in the future. I believe it was a, a state um, um, mandate to, for towns to put this money aside. But that's, that's really a question for Marlene. She knows all the background on it.
But the Restoration Fund is for use alone.
It's the books. That go into the vault downs.
Yeah, so all of the land records. So that all the records are in a, in a. That can be accessed in the. Yeah. Oh, okay, Marlene can give you literal chapter and verse on it. Um, so. Maybe she could have a, a guest appearance here. Anything else? Oh, oh, I did want to say we had the, the auditors in. I don't know if any, Paula has talked about that in the Blackboard meeting. We, we had two days with uh, with. Jordan and Jenna and. Um, it went very smoothly as far as I could tell. They were promising um, follow-ups, which is not, which have not yet happened. I hope, I hope that's a good sign. Um, but anyway, they're, they're doing their, their work now, um, but it, it seemed like it was um, a, a very smooth process. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have. Takes a little bit to get up. It's the transitioning from sitting to getting up and then starting to move. I know. I love it. My name is Dina Rudy and I am the chairperson of the Recreation Committee. And I am thrilled to be here. Really and truly. Um, what I did is I had basically written everything out that we have been doing since, I guess, around May. Just so it would go quicker because I know that your time is very precious and the evening can really drag on. So. I will begin. Um, the Recreation Committee meets on Friday, the fourth Friday of the month. In Coal Hall at ten A M, so we have a meeting coming up. This week, which is wonderful. Anybody who would like to join us, you are welcome. Community members are obviously encouraged to attend, to see what we're about and to give input. Uh, back in May. As we were starting to get into late spring summer season. At one of our meetings, we started thinking about what are we going to do? To make Howard Park more visible, so that people know that we're out there, that there are things available. And we want them to contact us and we want to make it an easy way for them to contact us. So what we came up with was a marketing strategy. Strategy. And we had Jen post on our website, something called the Last for Summer. And in that blurb, we put down all the information that we wanted to include, so that people would know what was available. How they could contact me, the numbers that they would need in order to contact me, in order to reserve the pavilion. Or get any other kind of information. That was dealing with Howard Park. And it was successful. Because we did get an increased number of contacts from the community. And from people that were using the pavilion, so it works very nicely, very nicely. I also want to mention that the soccer field and the tennis court drainage is finally completed. We were on hold for almost two years. We couldn't do anything because nothing could proceed until the drainage was addressed. So we waited. And the tennis courts got more decrepit. And atrocious. We're working on that. But the drainage is finally completed, so now that that's addressed. The soccer fields are in wonderful, wonderful shape and we are encouraging. All of those youngsters and adults that want to use the fields, come on down. They're beautiful. There's no wishy-wishy areas anywhere. It's graves. Um, Paula Iken, thank you, thank you, has applied for a state recreation grant, a one-to-one matching grant. And this would provide for resurfacing of the tennis courts. Adding pickleball courts as well as purchasing storage shed and equipment. This is great. Tilner Trail, um, if you haven't been down there lately, has got tree identification tags that are posted. These are wonderful. For people that just have a curiosity about, I wonder what kind of tree that is. Or if you're out there with a group of kids and you want to do some kind of a nature study. It's a wonderful tool. So that is out there and also we have the birdhouses. That uh, were put up along the trail. And also along the perimeter of the park to encourage nesting of our local feathered friends. We have continuing collaboration with the Shaftesbury Elementary Teachers and the students for the story walk and for art in the park. If you haven't been down there to see what the Shaftesbury Elementary students have been doing. With the artwork, you're missing a tree. You need to go down. And you don't even have to walk that far into the park because it's right near the pavilion. And so. We intend to replace the lovely bird art, which is there now, with a fall theme. Of leaves and colorful trees. And then come spring, we would like to focus on the State of Vermont theme. Um, for the springtime in terms of the flag, the state bird. Oh, the state tree, the state. oh, the state tree, the state seal, anything state-related that we could display on that tremendously large area. So that's what we're thinking. And uh, the art teacher over at Shaftesbury Elementary, Emily Umpfleit, is wonderful, wonderful. We also have Cub Scout Troop three thirty from Shaftesbury, who are going to be doing a camping overnight this weekend. So they're accessing the park. They have contacted me several years ago before COVID hit. And that was very, very successful. They use it as a camping experience for the boys and also uh, for service projects. So what they have already done is they have weeded and mulched the trees that are lining the walkway in the park, if you haven't been down there. What a facelift, just to get all those weeds cleaned up from around the trees that are lining that walkway. Because they were pretty scummy looking. So they've already done that. Now during their camping experience, they're going to be bringing the horseshoe pits back to life. For all of the, the community to enjoy. Yeah, yeah, they were wonderful horseshoe pits, and then they were destroyed. And then that was the end of that. So we have the area all set up, but we can't do the horseshoes. But horseshoes is a wonderful, a wonderful activity for the entire family. Little kids, old folks who can't move around too much, we can all do this, it's great, and you're in nature. Uh, we are right now in the process of replacing the Howard Park recreation sign. As we all know, very sad day when that sign was stolen. I cannot, I, I just, words do not come to me to explain the distress that we felt when that happened, it was just atrocious. But Peckham Industries has reached out to our committee to find out how they could be of help to us. And we said, we know how you could be of help. So we asked them if they could help with replacing the sign. And they said they would love to do that. The community involvement with them is wonderful, they're very, very lovely to deal with. Um, Sarah Costin from our committee has been working with them, with Jonathan Kirk over at Peckham. And they've been great. So if all goes according to plan, we should have signage for Howard Park within a few weeks. We hope. So we're also in the process of planning the dog park at the end of the parking area, that's a big to-do. Um, more dog refuse stations are definitely needed, because dog disposal waste is a problem. And if we had more of these little stations, I think it would be more convenient. And maybe even some more of the large refuse cans, the regular refuse cans, so that people aren't going to be dropping their garbage until they get, or you know, by the time they walk over to the pavilion, their garbage is gone. So if we could put a few more garbage cans out, I think that would be helpful. And um, we are going to be getting bulletin boards and benches for the park. Because I don't know if anybody has been down there when the pavilion has been um, reserved. I go down and I have to use um, packing tape in order to wrap the signs, the reserved signs that I make around the poles. That has got to go. Anyway, so we are looking forward to uh, bona fide bulletin boards. And Paula's looking into that, yep, and we will probably be talking about that on Friday, in addition to some of the other things. Now the sign that Peckham is going to be creating for us.
Is not wooden.
Is not made of wood, not made of wood, but there is a wood component to it.
Right.
And we have the outline of, what is it, Glastonbury Mountain Age. So you have the outline of the mountains, it's going to be really, really nice. And um.
What is it made out of? Oh, concrete?
It's concrete.
Nice.
Concrete.
They're not stealing that.
Yeah.
That's why.
And if they're working on stealing, I think people will hear of the racket that they will have to, in order to do that. Anyway, that's what's going on with the recreation committee.
That's a lot.
Yeah, we've been busy, we have, even though, you know, it looks like nothing's happening, nothing's happening. What's going on? We have people asking about the tennis courts. And what's going on with the dog park, and it's like, we can't do anything, we can't do nothing.
Slow-moving.
Slow-moving.
But it's moving in the right direction, and it really is.
And the drainage is big. That was it, nobody goes past go until drainage. Otherwise, why bother? Because everything's just going to continue to be destroyed, yeah. Does anybody have any questions or comments that I can take back to my.
I do actually, um, because I was curious about those benches and how you're thinking about doing the benches, and if you're thinking about doing any sponsorship of some of the benches with like little plaques or other things. Partly because you recently lost one of your longtime members, Barbara Moreno, who was beloved in our community and then a member of the recreation committee. And I wonder if as a way to honor her service to the community, that it might be something that some of the teachers are, that are still live in the town, or some of us who were around with her, and things might be able to um, sponsor one of those benches if you don't already have kind of funding sources. And I suspect that there might be other folks too, depending on kind of the price and things that would probably pitch in for some of those.
Yeah.
Um, just because it is such a community.
We, we were thinking about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not specifically at a meeting, but we had been talking about that. Because we'd like to do something to honor her, she was a wonderful contributor.
Right.
To our, to our committee, she's just a wonderful.
And a huge advocate and, and had so much joy of, of, and pride in Shaftesbury. And, and all of the things that, that came out of Shaftesbury, and I think it would be a lovely thing to, and if we opened it up. I think there's a lot of, we were at the, the service and there, there were a lot of folks there that, that came to celebrate her life and, and I think would come out for something like that.
Yeah. She and her husband were there when we were putting up the bird art uh, for the art gallery there. And she was not feeling well, but she was there, she wanted to be part of it. And three weeks later, she passed away. But she, yeah, she was there. She wanted to be contributing and she was active, and it isn't over till it's over. And she loved what she did and she loved her community. So.
Which is a message we so want to.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, I know. Well, I thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And just giving us that update, because it's, it's sometimes, having these updates have been just so lovely. I think I speak for all of us, board members, because we do kind of sometimes get into our silos when we don't get to hear all the good work that's happening until something is a problem or something else. And so having all that joy.
Yeah.
Um, that's happening.
Because you're zeroing in on what you're doing, just like the recreation committee, you zero in on what we're doing. We don't know what the other committees are doing, we're, you know, trying to do what we have to do. Yeah, so I guess I'll see you in what, three months or so?
Yeah, a few, few more months, we'll see what, what new adventures you're up to.
Yeah. Low in the winter, you know. Thank you so much. You did it. I did it, I'm up. Goodbye, everybody, have a wonderful evening. Thank you so much. Hey, and the economic development committee up to.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. For the record, I'm Rick Bennett, I chair the economic development. We meet uh, on the second Tuesday of every month. Um, I, I guess you're probably all aware of the Bennington County, the project that the Bennington County Regional Commission is doing. Sort of the overall capturing information on the businesses of the um, village business district. So um, that project has been going on since uh, the spring. Um, it's probably going to wrap, they'll probably have a report for us next month, October. Uh, I can give you some information, I can't give it all to you because they didn't give it all to me. Um, they have identified thirty-four properties within the Village Commercial District. Twelve of those properties have street-side visibility or, you know, some sort of signage, I guess. Uh, the remaining, what, twenty-two do not necessarily present an obvious front.
These are places that have businesses in them?
They are all registered, uh, I guess with the State of Vermont as some sort of business. They've done sort of that property inventory. Um, they have already identified eleven sites that have significant development or enhancement potential. Their words. Um, they haven't told me what those sites are, but there are. Uh, within the village, again, within one district. And then they are in the midst of a series of interviews, they chose six businesses uh, where they're going to interview employers. Um, they, there's a questionnaire that uh, I could certainly give you a copy of, but it's generally, you know, statistical information and that, when you're open. And then questions about, you know, do you find anything difficult about operating a business here? What, would you like to see change, things like that? Um, that information they're gathering now. And then the report and the presentation of their findings is what I think we'll see next month. They will consider, you know, things like what type of business might be best fit for the area based on trends and um, things that would help incentivize development in this area for business. That's what we hope to see. The reason I don't really have details, I think, I know for this, for the interviews, they spoke to the fact that they want to keep it sort of um, non-biased, so I guess if I knew, like, you know, there's potential that I could go whisper in somebody's ear. So everything is kind of, but I'm, it really is quite hefty with their progress, especially you know, as you know, the project manager initially suffered an unimaginable loss. And uh, they, the BRCRC picked right up with this project. Questions on that before I continue?
Is this um, report also going to talk um, about tips, the economic um, tax incentives and things like that? Is that something that they're going to touch upon, or is that something for kind of a later date?
It's not something that I.
That they've talked about putting in there for it, okay.
I mean, I don't, I didn't really know enough to ask that, so I'm not really uh, sure, but it's not been mentioned in his. Um, he gave me a pretty solid uh, rundown of what to expect.
Okay.
So. Not really.
Okay.
But who knows? Uh, other things, I guess the secondary, uh, so there's sort of um, casting a little bit of a wider net, Andrea Bakke is the co-chair of the committee and she's really spearheading this effort. Um, and she has an acronym, she's calling it THRIVE. A town hub for resources, innovation, ventures and entrepreneurship. So that is going to be sort of a, a registry, if you will, of all businesses throughout the town. Um, you know, whether or not they have some sort of street presence or not. Um, you might know Andrea is, you know, is a self-employed sole proprietor of her business. And there are others like her that, you know, fly under the radar. Um, so um, her uh, mission is with our health is to get all of that information in one place and hopefully post it on our town website. So that they can share resources, you know, leads to sort of a shop local kind of a vibe if you're looking for services. Um, so she uh, will have that questionnaire. We expect to have that up October first, it'll be online, it'll be hard copy in certain areas of the town. And then hopefully, uh, so then October first to uh, December first would be that period of collecting the data. Uh, the month of December, we will organize everything and hopefully post it for January first as uh, you know, a viable resource on our site. The, and then quarterly updates, because we probably, I would imagine, once it's posted, there will be more interest generated, one would hope, and then, you know, it will grow at least in the early stages, hopefully significantly, and then just become a regular uh, sort of a maintenance. But anyway, that's our, you know, I would say second biggest uh, effort. And then as far as a committee, I mean, we created a SWOT analysis amongst us, so strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. Um, I have that slide, I don't, I don't want to, I know your agenda is very packed, so I can just.
No, I think. Yeah.
Okay, um. Yeah, and I, you know, the one that I made is very colorful, but it was not showing up at all on uh, the screen, so I gave you black and white. Uh, the interesting comment that I had, so we ran this by Scott at the BRCRC or, or project manager. And um, he thought that it was good, but it was more Vermont-centric than Shaftesbury-centric. And then that's kind of where we left it, but, and, and again, it's sort of a living document, we can add and subtract. But um, uh, I wonder, you know, whether that's a good or a bad thing. I mean, it sort of identifies us as, you know, having the same strengths and weaknesses as the rest of the towns in the state, so we can all move forward in a unified front, you know, like anything that the state focuses on housing. Vermont is the second highest rate of homelessness in the nation.
Yeah.
Um, so when people tell you that there's a housing crisis, it's not because people started moving up here after the pandemic and paying a lot for housing. It's, it exists, these people that live here and need homes, and there's, you know, there's a real problem. So uh, anyway, uh, this is what we came up with, as I said, it's a living document. And we're kind of working through, but you know, it's, these are things that I want the committee to be able to sort of speak to. Not necessarily be subject matter experts on zoning or, you know, the crisis of housing, but at least be able to be aware that these things are high on our list. Because without housing, we're not going to have any really development at all, because where, where will people live if they can't, if they want to work? Um, the, so the other thing I have is, um, and I think this is the said. Of course.
What was?
Go back to the SWOT.
It's okay. What, what is it that you guys are thinking about with engagement with part-time residents?
Well, um, I think uh, one of the thing that comes, things that comes up is that um, are part-time resident, what are secondary homeowners contributing to the community?
Excuse me.
How can we tap into that? Because uh, I mean, you know, hence, it's not exclusive. I mean, certainly everyone, you know, no matter what their living situation is, can be, you know, interested in contributing back to the community or not, but um, we just thought, you know, there is that segment of people that we might not be reaching that could be a resource for her, for us in many regards, and how do we kind of market that?
Do we have data on that? How many folks are part-time residents in Shaftesbury? Either through our tech.
I would think. Assessor.
Right.
Be an interesting thing for you to connect together on, and then potentially looking to see who those folks are.
Right.
And especially as development opportunities come up and other things that might be.
Great, like our community center, I mean, certainly there's an opportunity for, you know, in, involvement financially, resource-wise. Um, are these part-time residents even aware that we find this that important, or, you know?
Right.
So.
And do they even know how to engage with the town?
Exactly.
Many of them may want to be more engaged, but not.
So that's our, yes, that's a good point. Um, we, I assume it's public information, though, you can find out that they're filing either as a resident or non-resident.
Right.
Uh, as I did for many years before we inducted your permanent.
Yeah.
Um.
Interesting stuff.
Yeah, so.
Cool, thank you.
Would you mind sharing that with, or sending it to Paula so that she can send it? Because it just, there's a lot.
Yeah, I have a Google Drive, um, you are already on there, but you're the only Google uh, address that I have.
Great, alright, I just, I think it would be good for us, yeah, no, for us to constantly be thinking about. Thinking about as well, because they're sparking all sorts of.
Making sure that you all have.
It's just very interesting, yeah.
Uh, so this is the, um, so S E D. Everybody know what S E D is, you know, the comprehensive economic, economic development strategy is a. Living document, it's, it's many things that, um. That is, uh, I will read the definition, it is a federally recognized, regionally led. Five-year plan that is de- designed to build our region's economic resilience and prosperity, so. Um, for the state of Vermont, there's the, the one. Uh, strategy encompasses kind of the southern, the, um. Bennington, Wyndham County, so all the way over to Rattleboro, um, it's called the So Vermont. So, yeah, there's a site, there's a, we have a conference every year in the spring, um. That, uh, and, and it's every five years that the document is sort of updated, this is one of those years. Uh, there are public meetings this Wednesday, there will be one in Manchester. And one in Bennington, there'll also be ones over on the other side and throughout, but these are the two closest. Or I guess the only ones in Bennington County, um, I will attend. One, if I'm ambitious, I thought I might attend both, because one is at noon time and one is at six, and I'd be interested to see. What Manchester says versus what Bennington says, but, um, nevertheless, uh. It's just another one of those things that, um, I try to keep the committee aware of, and, you know. We may not all be able to attend, but at least, I, I mean, I know I'll be there and I'll share the information and. You know, it's something that as a committee, we should be, uh, educated on, so that's kind of what's happening this week. Um, and, yeah.
They've been asking, I think, on Front Porch Forum for folks, so they'll have surveys, and so certainly encourage everybody to fill these out. Because these are all things that are working to kind of create a. More resilient economic strategy, but not just by towns, but by entire regions, so that you can get. Um, and the Silvermont has gotten lots of grants and other things that are really working on kind of addressing some of the most, um. Difficult issues that kind of our entire region is facing, and so, uh, the survey was really interesting, and I think. Uh, if you have Front Porch Forum and Cheshire just got its own Front Porch Forum, um, which is great after many years. Um, that folks should go on and, and fill out the information, because they really are trying to gather. As much information to kind of draft this new strategy again.
So, yeah, you know, and then, uh, I just, uh, I mean, some of the other things that I bring up at meetings, but I would encourage you to look at. Housing, there's a great podcast on Vermont Public, there's a. Uh, they do a series called Brave Little State, and this one is, this latest one is called, I think I sent it to Paul. Um, is Vermont's motel program a magnet for out-of-staters experiencing? Oh, good, okay, everybody knows, I don't, because I didn't wanna tell, I didn't wanna like, you know, spoil the, uh, outcome.
Highly recommend.
Because I certainly heard that, uh, apparently legislators repeat that sometimes, and it turns out. Spoiler alert, is not at all out of, uh, town, out of staters that are coming to use services, if they did it, I mean, it's. Open one study, but they found it was anybody that had moved here and is in the motel program. There were less than four percent respondents that were, and those were, you know, there were examples of people that were brought here because they were promised jobs. Have jobs, they just can't afford housing, so they're stuck in the hotel program. Um, anyway, great podcast if you haven't listened to, um, and again, another example of what I try to encourage our committee to be aware of. Uh, the Vermont Futures Project is tied in with Silvermont and their. I mean, it sounds weird, but their mission is to increase the population of Vermont, which some people aren't really wild about. But nevertheless, I mean, it would be a fractional amount, and it's just. An opportunity to create a diverse environment that also leads to a more robust economy, because diverse. Uh, populations have, you know, a better chance of thriving economically, um. And then finally, the zoning information, uh, Shelley has been very helpful with us, and, you know, it can be confusing and you're sort of trying to play the match game between. What zone something lies in, and then what the rules are for that zone, so, um. We're trying to educate ourselves, again, not subject matter experts, but at least be able to speak to it if someone's set hand, I'd like to open. Something. Uh, so that's it, that's all I have, any further questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, that's very worth. Thank you so much for all this work.
I suppose we'll, um, you know, next month, we'll have the report, so that'll be exciting, that'll be.
Yeah, eleven sites with potential, that's exciting.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Alright. We, uh, the next two items, um, I believe are Paul's. Number ten, request for Microsoft three sixty.
I'm requesting Microsoft three six, three sixty.
What a surprise, given the title of this.
Microsoft, right now we have, um, a Microsoft Outlook that's. Twenty nineteen, which doesn't seem that long ago, but in technological terms, and it's old, and there are things we can't do. Uh, like shared documents, the nature of the operations at Cole Hall, there are many si- good word silos. That sharing documents would make the work, work a lot quicker, it's not, okay, here's the document. Attach it, send it, and a person downloads it, this is like the old way of doing things, so, we're looking for. Microsoft three sixty-five obviously includes OneDrive, cloud storage. Uh, you can access your files from anywhere, I think Google Docs, but it's Microsoft. Regular updates, collaboration tools, mobile and web access, and, um. It has a focused inbox, calendar sharing is.
Big.
Big, um. We've kind, a few of us have started doing it on twenty nineteen, and it's just not, it doesn't work very well, I can see why they. Why they made it better, but it's important that people who work at Cole Hall, they kind of know where I am all the time, or where, Jen's at a cemetery. Or Marlene's at a training, and just everyone's sharing the calendar, so if someone walks in, I wanna see the town clerk, I wanna see town administrator. You can look right on the calendar and say, she's out of the office, or she's.
Won't be back today, we'll be back today, we'll be back tomorrow, we know exactly.
We know where everyone is.
And again, it's a time saver.
Exactly, and it's like, you, you don't have to run upstairs, it's just, you know, it's more efficient. Uh, better security, and then I love that you put this in here, Jen wrote this up, and I'm like, I'm a big fan of dark mode, so I'm like, you guys can put your email in dark mode. So silly, but.
It is actually, as a programmer, I can say it's better on your eyes.
It's better on your eyes.
Yeah.
Um, so we are in, we're still kind of in negotiations with R C S, because we're trying to figure out, um.
As far as the price for the emails?
The price for the emails, roughly, it's about eight twenty-five per user per month, but we're trying to limit it. Alright, who really needs this versus the five-dollar version of Microsoft? Uh, I would say, for the email, yeah, for the email, um, definitely. Cole Hall employees, definitely, Mike at the D P W, Josh Water, like, we're just kind of fine tuning three sixty-five. Um, to link with tax collector, the more, um, we become familiar with the. The pluses and the things that it can do, the more we're going to do with it, especially sharing documents.
Hmm.
Um, Shelley and Gina always have to share, it would be easier.
Marlene definitely needs it.
Marlene definitely needs it, we need it, uh, it will just open up the web within. The town, the town employees, um, better, we've got to get to be more efficient, so I'm requesting. I can bring the final pricing to you, but we wanna keep the negotiations up and, again, bring it into the twenty-fourth century.
Yeah.
Dragging it.
Yeah, my experience, um, in a workplace, I knew the three sixty-five was that I suddenly loved Microsoft. And where I had hated it before.
Right.
And it's just a, it's a total name changer.
It is, it really is.
Looking in a complex environment.
Mm-hmm, and then we'll be able to do more and collaborate even more with it, we won't have the limitations.
So, first questions?
Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this one's mine too.
Oh, yes.
Yes. So just to introduce this. Uh, um, for the public, we're having a very serious problem. Of mold and water in the basement, and we have hence moved everybody in the basement up here.
Except the town clerk, she's still down.
Except for the town clerk who needs to go somewhere. Um.
So, in the past, when they've done remediation before, their attempts at it, there was a trailer there. Uh, we use the, the same trailer company at the transfer station, and. We're kind of be two, a choosing between two, but I think we're gonna go with the smaller one. Nothing is, nothing is easy, it seems, we're finding, because the larger one, while the space would be good, it comes with a bathroom. But they're like, you need to hook it up somewhere, and even though we know where the things are, we're not gonna do that. Um, and if we lose access to the bathroom in Cole Hall while the things are being done, there are other things we can figure out from there, they have other little.
We're kind of worried about it freezing too.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Got it, we, we would have to run a hose to the septic and winter time it would freeze, and that'd be another issue.
Exactly, um, it looks to be about four hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. There are fees upfront that are one-time, like delivery, transportation to the site. Lock and level installation and all that, I'm also gonna request, I think both of these sizes come with the two doors, so there's like a smaller office in the back. Would make sense for the town clerk to be in there, and then, um, you know, when elections come up, there's space to do that in the back, and then also. The, um, people who come in to do the research, so set her up down there. Um, and one of those doors, I would like to order a, a, a ramp.
Eighty-eight.
Which is another good reason to make her be the person who goes to the trailer.
Out of everyone at Cole Hall, people come in mostly to see her, and that would make the most sense for the townspeople. Um, so right now, that's what we're looking at, a thirty-two by ten field office, and.
You wanna just run through the numbers?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it says, uh, a recurring fee monthly is four twenty-five. Delivery and transportation, the one-time charge three eighteen, block and level installation charge two twenty-five. Pickup transportation charge from site three eighteen, unblocked removal charge two twenty-five, I would assume those, uh. Two latter ones would be when they take it away, and there's a one-year minimum, which it might, it be thinking it. Might take that long, we don't know how long we'll leave the trailer. Depends on the results of what we can do downstairs in Cole Hall, and how livable we can make it or workable. And the sooner we do that, the sooner we can reclaim the space. Two part-time employees can share an office, the assessor will move into one of the offices, and we'll get this back. That's our plan. Okay. I don't know, out there obviously, but I don't know, they're probably closer to the door.
Closer to the door, to the building, and then we're just gonna have to utilize. Utilize both sides of the parking lot more, yeah.
And they might say it has to go here because it's flatter, or, you know, you don't, I don't know, I, I don't know where the other one was, but.
As close as possible to the building, Mike, because we gotta, we gotta run electricity and, um, um, cat five cables for their phones.
Internet.
Um, yeah, as soon as we start to move, Marlene, we have, yeah.
We don't wanna block access to the newly found septic.
Right, yeah, and we, we need to move the server, because we need our phones, Gina doesn't have a phone, I don't have a phone yet.
Need to get this done, need it as soon as we.
Yeah.
We want big trucks to be able to get to the septic and the.
Yeah.
And all that, so.
Yeah, it's a pretty wide berth coming into this parking lot, I think.
Yeah.
I think it'll be plenty of room.
What's, more thoughts, questions?
Yeah, sounds good, I know the one, the transfer station was supposed to be there for a short time, it ended up there for.
It's not, and like.
Sometimes when they arrive, they stay.
You never know, and it's, you know, I've said to everyone a few times, it's like, none of this is ideal. None of this is convenient, but it's temporary, and we need to do our best to. Fortify the downstairs for whatever we end up using it for, and, and really, I mean. It could be the oil tank, for Pete's sake, who knows, um, we have to kind of adjust the sales as we go. And, and the plans, but for now, this is.
And that we're solving something that has been a problem for decades, and we are.
About time.
Working on trying to actually.
Yes.
Make this building resilient and standing.
And have the people be breathing nice air.
This seems to be a problem that's been sort of, um, dealt with in the most minor ways and shoved aside.
And kick the can down the road. So it's time to just.
So we really need to do the surgery now.
Right, do the best, we do the best we can with it, and, you know. So far, we've had good luck, so.
And so. Do we need a, do we need a formal vote to approve these two? Great. There's gonna be Microsoft three sixty-five all over, including in a new trailer. Okay, um, we now want to. Induct our second and final enhanced energy plan hearing. And it doesn't seem like we have any new public here, were you here for the previous? Um, can we get that?
The enhanced energy plan? I have it on the website, I can get it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um. I, I need to say, first of all, that in the first hearing, we have a technical glitch. And we're working from the earlier version of the enhanced energy plan. Enormous apologies to the public, um. So that had been a, um, a version that was from several versions back. Uh, in the planning commission's work. And the main difference. There were two main differences, uh, one main difference was that the one we were reading for. From, uh, said that the town would. This is on, on page twenty-six, actually, Jen, if you can just skip there, um. We had been reading from a version that said that no solar facilities would be permitted. Um, if panels covered more than twenty acres, but in fact, it's five acres that was proposed. So, this, this recommendation is there in orange, no. Solar facilities shall be permitted, and solar panels cover more than five acres of land. And then the second one is no wind turbines shall be permitted greater than a hundred feet in height. Previous version said forty. A hundred feet in height turns out to be the height that you can actually buy residential. Uh, wind turbines at, the, the ones that are forty feet are apparently really no longer produced, because they are not. Able to make something that's meaningful in its production of energy of forty feet, so.
Buy a bunch of them when I'm heading to water, tell me.
Residential ones, or the, the industrial ones?
There's so many of them all, there's points where you get right next to them, but they're inch. But anyway.
Yeah.
Half of it is fifty feet.
Yes, exactly.
The kids go, yeah, there you go.
Yes.
You see, not in the wild.
They're very big, and, um. I think the thing that's outlined in this enhanced energy plan that's important for us to keep in mind is that in fact, our potential placements for solely renewable energy are fairly limited. Because and if you want to go actually to page twenty-eight, Jen. That's where that data is discussed. There's really good solar potential in the gravel pits, the abandoned gravel pits on the elementary school roof and at the Bernstein display roof. That's really good solar availability, but it's no place near a three-phase power line. And for that reason, at this point in solar technology, those are useless sites to us. Because they can't hook into the greater grid. So what the Bennington County Regional Commission identified as Shasbury's primary method for individual citizens being able to create significant amounts of renewable energy, as is, in fact, with individual wind turbines. That's where they're expecting our town to do the most in terms of our share of the county's renewable energy generation. If you want to skip to page thirty, Jen. This is just a wait. A map of the solar potential. This, there.
Thirty-one.
There are thirty. So that shows the orange ones are the orange areas are the areas with high solar potential. But, but as you will see, most of them are actually in areas that are not anywhere near the three-phase power line, which is the thing that
The magenta line is the is the three-phase power, so you can see that the orange site, there aren't very many along that, that phase three. Power line, so not economically a viable option currently, the way our technology is and could change in the future, but.
And anybody can find by going to this plan on our website more, much more information, including they have a map of the wind potentials in town too, which I don't think we should go through right now, but most of our industrial scale wind potential is on the west side in areas that are either national forest or that are such high view potential that it seems to be a general feeling that that would not be a great place to put wind on the industrial scale that we see, for example, on the way to Brattleboro, so that's what led to the recommendation that we, as a town, really encourage people where possible to put in home wind turbine facilities. On page forty-one and forty-two, I believe that's where it is. There are a lot of recommendations about the creation of an energy committee, and we have in fact done that, and the energy committee is doing a lot of these things. And I'm just sort of quickly drawing people's attention to what it looks like, but I suggest.
Say it better.
I don't think that that's the page that she's thinking, there's a whole section about.
Might have been back here.
Yeah.
Beginning.
A little bit earlier.
There we go, that's page forty.
Municipal energy. So it says we'll establish, thank you, a municipal energy committee, and its role will be to implement this plan and track the progress in the policies and actions. They are beginning to do that work. There's also, if you want to move on. They're going to work to further goals of conservation and increased efficiency. They're going to evaluate all our municipal infrastructure for potential efficiencies, and they're going to work with the planning commission on changing zoning bylaws to increase energy efficiency and renewable energy generation. We can keep going, I think. They're going to help us, and they're working on this already. Looking at creating EV charging stations here at the town offices. And I think people can read those things for themselves. Any, does anybody here have any comments or discussions or questions about this? And I know we do have Mr. Durango and on our
I did. They mentioned back in the beginning, I think on page forty. That energy, whoop, I passed it. Mentioned that energy committee that's no longer in that Norshaft Energy Committee.
Right, that's true.
That should be taken out.
Did they completely I, I think that they may still exist, but there is a Shasbury Municipal Energy Committee, and I think that there still is a group of folks that are in the Norshaft Energy Committee.
Do you know for sure that that's
No, I, I thought they disbanded in different ways.
And they might be in different ways, but I mean, I don't think that that concludes them from talking to each other and helping advance kind of regional work.
Yeah, well, I think Jen is saying that the Norshaft Energy Committee doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah.
I, I thought they just sort of caused that entity, but didn't dismantle it because North Bennington they want.
Oh, okay.
That was, that was really
Okay.
North Bennington and Shasbury working together.
But I'm sure we could reach out to Andrea, the chair, and ask, because she was
We could do that.
Definitely no. It's they are still moving as well.
We can help.
Not for it.
Okay, so I guess what we, what I would like is a motion to adopt this, and then we can talk about potential amend, adopted as amended, for example. With what Jenny, she's talking, and I have a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt this enhanced energy plan.
Thank you, Mike, can I have a second?
Certainly.
Thank you. Okay. What do people think about moving forward with this? Now. The subject to meaning the language about Norsha.
The Senate section says the committee could work with, so if the committee is gone, then it's okay, it's covered. Yeah, I'd be in favor of moving forward this way. The sooner the better.
The sooner the better.
Been a long, a long process, my community input a ton of work on the planning commission and BCRCs, and thank them for what came to a really, I think fair enhanced energy plan that, that represents very, very disparate ideas and beliefs about how we tackle some of what will be a Shasbury's most difficult challenges as we face the next twenty years, and I, I think that there has been a lot of energy and a, a good outcome that has had compromises on both sides. So I would agree that it's time to, we've had public hearings, people have had opportunities communicate with us personally, but also in big forums and smaller forums.
We've had forums, large and small.
Yeah, and, and that this will put us in good stead as we go forward if other opportunities come up in the future. The PUC process, we will now have substantial difference, they will be following this EEP that we created, but also our solar ordinance and other things, so I think that we have created a little bit more of a backstop where there hadn't been one prior, so I think that feels good as a town.
Yeah, also. We ready to vote on this?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Adopted, or you're in your.
And this is going to get sent to the BCRC for their next step of getting it. And we need to make sure that that gets in before October first.
Before the thirtieth of this.
Oh, before the thirtieth, so that's something that
Actually, it could go out tomorrow, tomorrow, it would be easiest for the BCRC.
Yeah.
Who's going to do that?
I'm putting it onto these. Paula, are you going to send it to our BCRC?
Sure, I just, I heard at the pleasure of the select board.
So special. I guess it should also be copied to Cali Fishman.
Okay, I'll do that.
Well, that really is a conclusion to a very long and difficult process.
Thank you to everybody who worked on it, there were so many people that
Contributed from all ends of this. Particularly to the planning commission and the BCRC. And to Shelley Stiles, our zoning administrator, who shepherded it through most of this process. Okay, number thirteen, expenditure of remaining ARPA funds. So we have remaining in our ARPA account. It was sixty-three thousand, right?
Approximately, yeah, like the number around the treasurer's report is still that one-on-one, but we took down the house, so subtracting, it's, it's around sixty, sixty-three.
And this item is really for discussion. I the the things that Paula and I have been talking about, and she's been talking with staff at Coal Hall about, is spending this money on basement remediation, which it seems to be influential emergence and immediate need. And on hiring hiring a grant writer
Part-time.
Part-time to help with development, the getting grants and shepherding them for a year. To help with the community center development. And that was something we talked about using our money for way back when we first got it, it was a piece of the, the plan was to hire somebody to work on grants. And what we've been talking about is the possibility of putting out a you know, a job description that would include a part-time grant writer having the capacity to stay on beyond a year if they were able to raise their own salary in grants, which is a sort of standard grant writing thing, but so what we would be using some piece of this ARPA money for would be just a one-year part-time position. To launch us in the grant writing world of community center.
And how much would that be?
It's a whole campus to deal with.
If, in kind of margin, did you do research on market value of kind of what a part-time grant writer of this magnitude would be?
We did a little research, but I think we sort of need to do a little more.
Yeah, I looked on Indeed, and it was, I couldn't tell from Indeed, I specifically wrote in Vermont. You know, depending on the field, it was kind of all over the map, like some pay quite well, and others, so
I wouldn't use Indeed if I were you. It wouldn't use Indeed if I were you.
No, I was just saying, I just wrote you know, how much, you know, part-time, I just threw it into Google, and that was one of the sites just to see, and it was like you know, probably thirty to like fifty-five or something, but it depends, like, I mean, the people who are the fancy
But if you're, if you're really going part-time, really part-time, right.
Thirty to fifty was for part-time.
Okay, really, really, yeah. Yeah, so do developers, but I live in Shasbury. And Colkers and, you know.
These grants are going to our federal and state grants that require reporting documentation that is
Extensive.
And it takes I mean, none of us on this board, I mean, several of us have written grants and worked on trying to shepherd them through, and it really truly is something that needs to be focused and that has to be your full-time kind of occupation, because some of these things require portals and other things that are really technical and because of the kinds of money that we want to go after, including Bernie Congressional Funds and other things, it just requires somebody who has extensive knowledge of how to work through these things, and it really is much more complicated than, you know, potentially writing grants that people are thinking about, and so I really want to stress that that is a huge piece, and, and nobody in this, in this group, although we have really talented folks working here at Coal Hall, none, none of the folks here have that expertise and or the ability and timeframe to kind of devote to the level that we are going to need to lift this project.
Right, and, and a piece of it that I forgot to mention when I started this is that before we can even apply for grants for a community center, we need to be acquiring the grants for this, the community sector. Which is also a sort of complicated grant writing process, actually, the federal and the state level, and it's going to be a matter of not only all the documenting and portals, but also the timing of the various pieces of grants getting together, so we really need somebody very sophisticated.
I think it might be worth putting this out on the job board that David used to use
I've already started working.
Yeah, if what, and potentially if the VLCT has some ideas or or folks that maybe are already in-house that might be able to be working, I know that we worked hard with one person that for the LTC had which we will continue to be in collaboration with, but
Yeah, she might.
Yeah.
There, there might be some ideas of people that are like, oh, that's, you want Joe Schmo.
Right.
So that is the person.
Somebody with intensive knowledge of Vermont, but we don't need somebody who lives in Shasbury, this is it.
Right.
So, so that opens our pool. That's somebody you have to get before you can hear.
Correct. And, and so all this funding needs to be allocated and, and. What is the specific term again?
It needs to be committed and, and contracts signed and shovel-ready, even though there's no shovel.
No, there's a, there's a.
A metaphorical.
So, so maybe for the next, like, when we will have a. A job description and salary range.
Yeah, a little clearer picture.
Ready to go.
As far as basement remediation goes, I think one of the other things that should be discussed in kind of the sixty-three thousand dollars that we have at the moment. Is that. There are folks that are working, Call Hall currently is on the state. Uh, historic building. Uh, list, but not at a federal level. And so. That is requiring us to do a lot of work to try to get on a national registry to then allow us to get. Hopefully matching funds. And so some of that is going to also help. Some of this money for this basement remediation because. It's preserving a structure that needs to be.
Getting us on the federal list.
Add another plate to spin.
Yeah.
Add another plate to spin. Yes.
But the woman Marlene spoke to, who said, yes, it's on the state, but it seems it's, uh, for. This is my term, but not the woman's term, kind of a no-brainer that it would. Become a federal one quite easily. Um, and then that opens up a whole other world of, of grants for historical buildings, so.
Yeah.
We'll do what we can.
So in light of that, um, range of possibilities that are really future. Um. I distributed to everybody of.
The estimate.
The estimate. That. That, uh, Tony, and I generated, um, that we. Recommended by Shelley Styles. And. The estimate was. Nineteen thousand four hundred and forty-nine. To. Essentially. Uh, cover the north and west walls from the basement. Means scaling down.
After ripping down walls.
Sheet rock. Cover the walls with vinyl sheeting. Dig interior trenches along the outside, I mean, the inside.
A French drain system, I think.
But it's an interior French drain. A French drain is exterior.
Exterior.
And this is really interior side. So the sheeting. Would take water that comes into the, in. Through the foundation. And direct it into this trench that runs along the sides of the floor. And. Then a sump pump would be attached to the lowest piece of that.
It's something a little wow.
Good rain. And. It would go out. To the drywall. Oh, it was that it would go out into the lawn, which seemed a little odd to me and Tony and Marlene, but. If we actually have a drywall, perhaps it could go with a drywall.
Right.
Um. And then. So that would, that would also be coming out of this minimum sixty-three and change.
And it seemed, I know it seems really odd to be like, we're gonna dig a trench in the basement of Call Hall, but. I'm just going by the, uh, the house I moved from in Ohio. We had a sump pump. But where the pipe was to empty into the sump pump was behind the wall. So like, here's the wall of the house and there's another wall. So like the wall got pushed in more. So you don't see any of that.
We would be adding another.
Yeah. But it, it gives the water a channel to go and then it goes. They do have to be replaced every few years.
And this was.
Yeah.
This was, uh, a contractor. Has this been talked about with the M S K engineers as far as?
The M S K engineer actually said, you're, they were speaking in terms of like, you could do this part. And then you can expand to the next step, but that was definitely the first step.
Okay, so they're both in agreement that this is the first part of the remediation is to take this trench. All around the walls, add these plastic sheeting in the basement.
Well, M S K didn't talk that specifically about how you would implement a drainage into a sump pump. But they said there were various ways.
Right.
And, um. And this was the first, and the basement specialists do that. So this was the first basement specialist we talked to.
Right.
And thought perhaps we should talk to another.
Another one.
Yeah.
More.
That one was in the state of New York, so maybe one of Vermont. Just to have.
Your thing seems a little weird to me. They're giving a second opinion. I know plenty of people that have had flooding problems in their houses and it's usually the outside that you're working on.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than dealing with the water once it's in the building.
Right.
Right.
I, I think.
That was not gonna work.
Okay.
Without significant.
Isn't the foundation like this thick?
It's three feet thick. It's thick. Yeah, and it has many, many holes. So what M S K was, as I understood, what they were saying was is. The exterior of the building would entirely. Have to be entirely re-pointed. And all of the windows resealed, which we probably need to do.
We may have to do that anyway.
In a short time. We wouldn't. Have access to it until we had really a vast amount of money. They didn't want to even weigh in about how much it would cost. To do all that exterior with, uh, hence the idea of a sort of intermittent. Process, um. Yeah, it seemed really weird. To me too, but as I digested it.
I think part of the quote was for dehumidifier as well.
Like super-duper dehumidifiers.
Industrial dehumidifier.
And it's. It, you know, we can't do nothing. We can't, we can't not do anything. We have to do something, so we have to. Figure out what to do. It can't be raining downstairs.
But is that going to, and that's where I'm kind of confused. If we are doing work in the basement and the water is coming in via the basement foundation. That doesn't, that's not addressing the water that's coming in via the windows, the cracks in the walls.
Well, also it could be coming in through the floor.
Right.
Which is another issue, so.
Like ground swell water, but not the above water. And so.
We need a starting point and then it's another adjusting the sails and like, uh, we hit a roadblock here or like. It's gonna unfold the way it unfolds, but we have to like, you know, it's like peeling a little bit of, a little bit of the floor up with some.
And airflow through the building. I mean, I'm not sick, but listen to me. I've only been in here an hour and a half and I'm all filled up.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we should. Talk to at least one of the basement specialists.
Sure.
And maybe they will say, oh, well, that's, that.
Right. Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
And Tony also suggested that we should consult a hydrologist. Which I thought was probably a pretty good answer.
I mean, last year was an ethically wet year and it was actually pretty wet right until August. Or so I'd say, so. You know, I don't know if we'd always be having this. We definitely have to deal with the water, but this should be. I theory this would be a pretty bad, would have been a bad last, you know, twelve to eighteen months, I guess, with this water problem, so.
Well, that we may be wet for a long time to come down when you're.
Right. Like my, my property has areas that are like wet, you know, they're not, they don't drain, but that shouldn't be the case here. So if there is a reason why there's water being held. You know, I don't know. I guess we just got a second opinion to make sure that's a. Kind of approach that someone else would agree with, I guess, next.
And then taking the walls down would give us eyes on. Is there a permanently wet part of the stone wall? Like what is going on? Like what, you know, we gotta take a look at it. And then if it rains, everyone run down. What, what's going on? You know, we really have to understand the physical. What's going on? We know the windows. We can kind of figure that part out.
Would be to, to hire. To hire somebody who just would come in to do demolition. And then look at it.
Is there a gutter along that? I mean, so all that water comes and lands right next to the building and just comes in.
Right, and there's no French drain outside, yeah. That was maybe step three that M S K was talking about. Cause there was like stopping the water from coming in, but also making it pull it away from the building.
It was built so long ago, they probably didn't put anything down, like no, like layers of rock or.
Right.
It's just, you know, whatever was there. The dirt.
So they'd have to dig a pretty, like a trench below the foundation level and fill that with some kind of draining material.
Right. That would help, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Like layers of rock, even if it wasn't like a French drain, at least if there was like layers of rock, it would go into the rock and drain.
Maybe some. Greenery and mulch to, you know, the, the trees.
Just pull it away from the building.
From the building.
Um.
I'm sure it would help.
M S K seems to be sort of concerned about where. The water would go if we were redirecting as much water.
As long as it didn't come in here, do we care?
Cause it's all weather.
Right, right.
I mean, our wonderful. They were just discovering.
Cause they're all, um. Cause they're all alone. We have one. Cause I remember M S K was saying we could put in a drywall.
Right. But that, yeah, itself is expensive and permits for it.
I wonder, that drywall is probably the old set that exists, even so it's. Inter rules are against. I don't know if there are rules yet, I think, we open that and just using it again.
We'll find out.
Is there is a rule about it?
We'll find out. It's gonna be an adventure, I think.
So. If you folks approve of the moving forward with that big line of plot, I will, um. I will look for another. Person to give us an estimate, somebody not from New York State, somebody from Vermont. And we'll put that. At the next meeting. Anybody who wants to, uh. Um, to that estimate. That second event, um, there's room for one of us beyond right, right? Of course, when the person.
I'll be there.
I will write to you all and so, and it's gonna happen. You can fight over that. Other business? Oh, okay. The view of action items is clean well.
Well, sending the E E P to Janet Hurley, C C and Kelly Sitchburn. Um, she's also gonna get more info about a part-time grant writer. And Naomi is going to get a second estimate. On the basement remediation and then send out a message for a second member of this left board if you attend. That conversation. That's it.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.